John DeGrand.
Present.
Terri Atwell.
Present.
Donna Getzmann.
Present.
David Wolfe.
Present.
Randy Hutchins.
Present.
Jason Cooper. Rebecca Barton on Zoom.
Present.
Brian Walker.
Present.
And Darren Schaper is not present. We have a call. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call nine one three seven one five one seven zero zero. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click raise hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a ten seconds remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
That'll teach ya.
Is mine? Can you hear that now?
Yes, I can. This is Rebecca Barton.
Sorry, my microphone was off.
I appreciate that.
Okay, disclosure of external contacts and/or discussions.
None.
None.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, approval of minutes from February twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-three. Well, hopefully everybody has read the minutes and if everybody's satisfied, entertain a motion for approval.
Terri Atwell moved to approve February meeting minutes.
Brian Walker, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next item, our board reports. So we have Board of County Commissioners actions. Ms. Penley?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Zoning Board Member Sean Penley, County Planning Staff. There is no Board of County Commissioners update, only to note that there was at the last meeting we had for the zoning board in February, there was just one application for a new hangar at New Century or Center, if you recall, at one hundred and fifty-ninth Street in the north Loop Road. That case was recommended for approval by this board and it's scheduled for Board of County Commissioners meeting tomorrow, March twenty-third.
Okay.
All right. Give an update for the Planning Commission actions.
Yep, Planning Commission actions.
So we have a few things to mention for Planning Commission. We had an open house meeting last night for the Sunflower Area Plan update. That meeting was very well attended, much larger turnout than we expected. That's an update that we are currently working on. As you may recall, we talked about, there's a subcommittee of the Planning Commission that's working on a proposed update to the Sunflower Area Plan that dates back to nineteen ninety-eight. We had a public informational meeting last night at the Timber Ridge Activity Center. It was very well attended, kind of exceeded the capacity at the meeting room. So we actually held three different sessions at that meeting room. We realized that there's such a large turnout and a lot of interest. We noted we'll probably need to have another public information meeting, so we will plan on scheduling that sometime in April. We're also going to be providing an update at the Planning Commission meeting next week, so there's going to be an updated report on that plan update for the meeting on March twenty-eighth. So that meeting, that Planning Commission meeting will be next week in this meeting room at five forty-five P. M. And we'll be providing an update once we do schedule another public information meeting. We want to have another meeting with a larger venue that can accommodate the possible larger crowd. And then we will have a public hearing that at this time is scheduled for April twenty-fifth for the plan update. So that's kind of just an overall summary of that action. There are other items on the Planning Commission agenda for next Tuesday's meeting, just a quick rundown. We'll have the City of Overland Park Comprehensive Plan Update. We'll have a representative from the Overland Park Planning Staff there to provide an update on that conference plan. We also have an update to the zoning regulations regarding accessory building permits. We have a new permit requirement that we are recommending for the regulations. That will be a discussion in the hearing for that, those regulation amendments. And as we noted, updates to the plans for the Sunflower Area Plan and the Airport Compatibility Plan Update. So busy agenda for Planning Commission coming up for the next two meetings. Happy to answer any questions regarding those updates.
All right, then business for the board. Application S W two-three dash two-seven-six dash F E slash P P M C one seven 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 zero Edgerton Road. I assume we have staff making a presentation.
Karen Miller with the Planning Department. And the location of this application is at generally one hundred and seventy-fifth and Edgerton Road. You can see that on the screen here. And just a reminder, this is a copy of the plat that you considered last year. It was a two-lot plat with a fifteen-acre lot in the corner of one hundred and seventy-fifth and Edgerton Road. And then the remainder, Lot Two, was one hundred and thirty-three acres. This was an application that met all of the minimum infrastructure requirements. The only issue that we had during this meeting was some of the neighbors had questions about the survey. So the applicant, Scott Wesley, he agreed to a continuance. And he and his surveyor met with all of the neighbors that cared to come and talked with them about the survey. And then at the next meeting, the neighbors were in agreement that they agreed with the survey. And it was passed unanimously. So now we have a replat of Lot Two. So this was approved last year, and this is Lot Two, one hundred and thirty-three acres. And the proposal is to create three new lots at about fifteen acres each running on to at one hundred and seventy-fifth. And the remainder, which is about eighty-six acres, I believe, running on to Edgerton Road. And again, it's the same situation. It meets all of the infrastructure requirements. And staff recommends approval of this. The one thing that we did discuss in some depth with Mr. Wesley was the fact that there is water available. There's a twelve-inch main along Edgerton Road. And there's a fire hydrant available to both Lot Six and the previous Lot One at the corner. There is not a water line along Lots Three, Four, and Five, but that is not a requirement of these regulations. It's not a requirement here at the plat. But we did want the future owners of those three lots, Lots Three, Four, and Five, to know that there would be a requirement to provide water service and fire hydrants in accordance with the Building and Fire Codes when they desire to build. And so we worked with Scott and the legal department, building codes, the water district. And we came up with an agreement that Scott would place a note on the plat letting future owners know that as a requirement of the building permit, water service would have to be extended. And then also, the legal department drafted a notice that Mr. Wesley would file along with the plat, putting future buyers on notice that this would be a requirement. And Mr. Wesley is in agreement with this. And also, he, in his paper, he can talk a little bit more about this, but in his paperwork with the people who are buying the lots, he has that notice in his paperwork also. So Planning Staff really appreciates the work and cooperation that Mr. Wesley has done to let people know about this requirement in the future. And so those are two stipulations. One, a note on the plat, and the other to file notice about the water, along with other standard stipulations. And with that, I'll just point out that the stipulations are on, recommend, the recommendation and stipulations are on page eight and nine. And then there's a proposed motion if you're interested on page ten. With that, I'll take questions.
John DeGrand.
I do have a question about the water service. When I was reading this, I thought that it was allowed for people to build homes without rural water, or they could do a well. Is that incorrect?
That's correct. With our zoning regulations, we have minimum infrastructure standards. And we don't, in the rural districts, if you had, when you come in and you plat in the rural district, which that requires ten-acre lots, our minimum infrastructure standards allows you can do a cistern and haul water, you can do a well. But our building and fire codes are something different, and that's governed by a different board. And under some circumstances, you can build on ten acres with just, you know, a well. But in other circumstances, you are required to provide water service and fire hydrants. And the reason that this lot is, these lots are required is the location of the water line at one hundred and seventy-fifth and Edgerton. So because of the proximity to the water line, the fire codes would require that to be extended.
Could they apply for an exception? If they didn't want to extend the water line to that property?
That's not my purview. I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, Terri Atwell, because this is the first time this has ever, I've been doing this for fourteen years.
This is an unusual.
Never had this come up.
So I'm thinking about the fire codes that I've read and seen. No. That's the thing. Those other situations where there's ten-acre lots, there are a series of things that you can do if you don't have water. But those are only available if there's no water line nearby. But this is a situation that, you know, in working with the plats, I've never come across this either. So this is kind of a rare situation.
Brian Walker, and its access to water and proximity of that access.
Yes, yeah.
I live on a lake that has no fire hydrants, but they can pump off the lake. They have to put a fire out or something.
Okay, Terri Atwell, again, so when were these codes enacted? Because I know several houses that have been built since probably two thousand that are in extremely close proximity to water, and they were not made to get on water and pay for the main extensions.
I think, Sean Penley, County Planning Staff, part of this requirement goes back to, as Karen mentioned, it's a building code requirement, and it's also for fire service and fire protection. In this case, due to the location of existing water and the standards that are required currently for fire protection, the fire district has indicated concern regarding fire protection, service of water, fire flow, and shuttling water. That's the reason for this suggested stipulation. We had talked with the applicant about this, and the applicant can address this as well, about this requirement for an agreement. There is nothing in the regulations that would require this type of agreement today.
In the zoning regulations.
In the zoning.
But there is in the fire and building.
Building and fire code requirements do apply.
There are requirements. And so I worked extensively with the building official and in legal, and they both looked at the code. And so the requirement is that you have to provide that water service. And in general, that's how the fire code is written. But planning, not planning, the county has added their own kind of exemptions under certain circumstances, but there's not an exemption for this situation. But there are exemptions for other situations.
Okay, Terri Atwell, again. Can you guys pull those, the fire code regulations and provide them to this board?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, because I'm just perplexed as to regardless of whether.
And it's good to understand that, but that is.
David Wolfe.
But that is, that's a requirement of another board. You know, the requirements, the zoning and subdivision requirements, they do not require that. I'm sorry, excuse me.
David Wolfe, I have a question about. I'm curious on the request from the County Fire District on that. And I see that there is easement for that, the water easement. Is that given at this time of replating this also?
That was something in our discussions with the fire, not the water district, that the water district indicated that they would like. And Mr. Wesley volunteered to provide that.
Okay. And, Mr., can I ask the?
If you would come to the podium and introduce himself, if that's okay with the chair.
Mr. Wesley, I'm just wanting to make sure that you're informed with all the information that you need to, and that you're, you should be. And, but if you're agreeing to all these stipulations, then that's up to you. I mean, that's your decision. We're just trying to make sure that we know all the reasons and the rules so we can make a determination on the next person that might have some different information than you. So just clearing that up.
So what I was told was, we had a water study done from Water Seven, right? Water District Seven. So we paid them to go out and do a water study, and they said if that pipe that runs north and south wasn't big enough to hold the water flow or a fire hydrant out there, then this is a viewpoint. We don't have to put a fire hydrant in. But if the water flow was big enough that we would have to put a fire hydrant in six hundred feet, I think it was, six hundred feet from the houses. And that's what I was told. So we paid a thousand bucks, had the water study done, came back and said, yes, it will support it. These are my buddies buying this. So Lot Three, same guys that bought the last lot, he just wanted more land. The middle one's a guy I own a company with. The other guy is just a buddy who wanted the land to be out there with us. So I've told them all, I'm like, hey, you can buy it. If you never do anything, no harm, no foul. If you choose to build a house on Lot Five, you have to run water to it because of fire code. And then also, I think we looked at insurance also, like your property insurance. They said you had to have, if there's water accessible within six hundred feet, insurance companies won't let you build a house if you can get to it. I don't know if that's true. That's kind of where we came to it. We didn't, I'm just following the direction of them. And that addition, that document was written by Bob Ford. It was Bob Ford, and it basically says, you don't have to do anything. If you put a shed on it, you're fine, but once you put livings quarters on it, then you need water.
And just curious, what is the size wire or water line that runs along Edgerton Road?
I want to say eight inch, if I remember right.
Okay.
And it was an eight-inch line that they wanted to go.
I thought they said twelve earlier.
It could be twelve on Edgerton, eight inch, anyway.
This is Karen Miller. It's a twelve-inch along Edgerton, and the water district would require at least an eight-inch along one hundred and seventy-fifth. And just a comment that this notice is just a basic notice letting people know that generally, well, not generally, but they will need to meet fire and building codes. And so if things change, it's whatever the fire and building codes requires. And that's simply what the notice is. It's no other requirement other than meet the fire and building code.
So therefore, that's a requirement?
To meet fire and building code, which everything does have to. But it's not in any extra requirement from our zoning regulations.
So to get, if this is approved, right, we can approve it and say, we don't need the document, be my thought, right? But everybody's okay with it. I've sent it to them. We've talked to them. We're all on the same page. I don't know. You guys tell me.
That's our job, is to make sure that the public ownership and that those people are and what the county wants to do are all in agreeance with the same information. So nobody is left out to pay for something that they're not required to pay for.
Right, so Water District Seven had an agreement. So I talked to Jim?
Alan.
Alan, great guy. Talked to Alan, and he said there's a, he already has this in the water district, right? There's agreement within the water district. Let's say Lot Five wants to build a house, and he builds a lot, right? So Lot Four and Three, if they ever hook up to it, they have to pay number five a third of his stuff. So they get their money back. Because we talked about that, like, what if we hook it up, and then the solar panel company comes in and they hook onto us, do we get reimbursed? And there is a legal document that Waterworks Seven has that lands all that stuff already.
Terri Atwell, but that's only, he gave you, did he give you a term limit?
Twenty years. Is what he said.
Really, a twenty-year term.
Up to twenty years, you can get your money back if people connect to it. And it's all prorated based off a distance and stuff. There's a formula.
Twenty-year term.
As far as I'm concerned, it's your land, and if you're agreeing to it, then we're just here to make sure that you're aware and got all the information that you have. And we need that information also for the next applicant.
I know, our group is good with it. The next group coming down the pipeline, that's what we talked about, like, you're somebody built a house somewhere without a water line, right, out there? We didn't have a water line when we bought it. We had to run wire to it. So that was ninety-six, I think our building was built. So we had to pay the city to get wired to us. But, I mean, they have to have, I mean, they're going to have to have water, no matter what. Right? They're going to have to have it, or the fire code, I mean, we had to meet with a fire guy, we had a meeting with, I've had more meetings on this about water.
Yeah, Terri Atwell, again, like, so since this is the first time this has ever come up with this board, like I say, I've been doing this fourteen years. We've done a lot of these. It has never come up with this type of stipulation from the fire district.
So let me ask you this.
It's kind of thrown.
Or the water.
Yeah, or the water company.
The water company doesn't care. They're like, we don't care if you do it or don't do it. They really said, this is a stupid exercise. You're wasting a thousand dollars, is what they told me. But I had to do it because it was required. And he's like, you're just throwing money away is all you're doing. Because they don't want to put a wire line in that nobody's ever going to build on anyway. So if, right, right, because the water gets stagnant, you said. Because we can put it in there, but then it's just a deadline. That's just a waste of time and money.
Right, until it's ready to be used, you wouldn't want to do it. But like I say, since this is the first time this has ever come up, I think we're all a little taken back by what the fire department is requiring. I know plenty of houses that have been built within a hundred feet of a water line that were not required to hook up. So I'm just a little perplexed, which is why I would like for the planning staff to provide that information to us so that we are more informed, because this could have already been handled if we had had prior notice that, like, here's what's happened. It's never come before your board again, but you guys need to be prepared.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Penley, Planning Staff. Staff will be happy to provide an update for the zoning boards from both the building official and the fire districts regarding this. This is a highly unusual situation. That is true. This has not been added as a stipulation on past plats. As Karen mentioned in the presentation, as part of this, in the location in which this property is and in relation to existing water service and the requirements from the building and fire code officials, this is a requirement of the, to meet a building permit requirement for a new residential development on these properties. This is what would be required in this situation. We understand that that's not a zoning requirement. It's a building code requirement, so there is some confusion there. We have had discussion with the fire districts and the water district regarding future updates that may involve amendments to the zoning regulations to include this. We've had initial discussion on that. We'd be happy to provide an update when we do have that discussion. It is something that is kind of an ongoing discussion, and it's something that will be probably addressed in the regulations, but at this time, it's a building code requirement. That's probably why it has never been specifically addressed in a plat. But given the situation we have with a plat, we want everyone to be on notice about the requirements before anybody buys a lot for a future home. That's the purpose of the situation.
So this is Scott, and he's correct. So thanks for clarifying that. So what the fire guy said in the meetings we had, let's say Lot Number Four, Brent says, I'm not buying this now. I'm out tomorrow, whatever, right? Well, it's not fair to the next guy to come in thinking he's buying it without knowing he has to add water. That's what the document says. It says, these guys know. But let's say five years down the road, ten years down the road, they don't ever do anything. It just sits there, the solar plant goes up, the highway gets extended, and QuickTrip wants it, right, whatever it is. It's saying, hey, guys, you do this, you got to run water. That's what it's doing. So it's not protecting my group, it's protecting the group after them, which I'm good with. I mean, I would never buy property without asking those questions anyway, but people do, right? So that's kind of how the document, it's not written like you have to do it. It's like, hey, guys, if you build a house, you need water.
And I agree with you. Most of the building codes in an area this large, dividing up like that, are written for a developer.
That's the problem we run into.
Which would be that, would be normal in this case if it was a developer that's putting in a whole whole bunch of lots and streets and everything. So, but that's why it's a new thing for us as the board.
That's exactly how it all started, because the question was, what are you developing? I'm like, nothing. I'm doing zero. I don't want to do any development. And then they said, well, this is. And then they said, well, this is a development, right? I go, well, it's technically not. I'm just selling land to buddies and we don't even have fences. So that's how it all started and how to protect the, I say, number two buyer down the road, knowing, hey, it's just a notice that you've got to have water. Which I'm, I'm all aboard letting people know that. They should know it, actually. I'd hate to go by sixteen acres and find out that building code required it. I'd rather know it before I wrote the, signed the document. So that's why I was so good with it and we worked with Bob and came up with a good document.
Randy Hutchins for clarification, is a requirement that they have to hook into the water or there has to be a water hydrant within X feet of the house?
Fire hydrant. Right?
I, I, I would say, I would, I would say no on the fire hydrant.
You, you have to have the water to have the fire hydrant. And so that, the, the exact wording. From the building code is, if I can find it. You need an approved water supply capable of supplying the required fire flow. If that's, that's generally from the, the building and fire codes. So translated, that means you need to run, run the water line to your property. And provide a, a fire hydrant within six hundred feet of your property. The edges of your property, not your, the house, but the edges of your property. And, yeah, it, and the, the waters, the purpose of the water study, it wasn't, it wasn't, um, a futile. Exercise. The purpose of the water study was to determine if there, if there was water. Available to, to be run. If, if, if you could do, I said that wrong. If you could extend the eight inch water line across the front of the road and provide fire flows.
So Randy Hutchins, it doesn't sound like it to me. It's a requirement. It sounds like to me, if it's a convenience, if it's close, then you're responsible, you're on the hook. I mean, we've got hundreds of houses out there that aren't even close to rural water. So how could that possibly be a requirement?
So. You, it helps to see the way that the building code is structured. The way the building code is structured, if you, um, have water available to you to be extended. Then you have to, to meet fire code. You have to have the, the approved water supply. That has a, a fire flow basically. But if you don't have that. If, in other words, if you're a mile away from the closest water line, then there's a list of things that you can do. You can have a letter from the fire district saying that you can shuttle, you know, so, so many. Like two hundred and fifty gallons of water per minute. You can have, uh, work with a fire suppression engineer to have, you know, a. Flame retardant roof and this and that. But, um, but that, those, those. Things are not available to this situation. And, you know, and again, this is not a requirement of our zoning regulations. This is just look, planning. This is what we're supposed to do, looking forward and, and seeing the, the roadblocks. That some unsuspecting buyer might run into. And this is a highly such. This is, you know, a rare situation in our fire code. So that's exactly why to put people on notice. And it's simply a notice that you will be required to meet fire code. And it's basically. Why don't you call the building official and ask what's going to be required is basically the idea. So.
Okay, this is John DeGrand. I took this thing off because I have been told by Alan Suter, this has been many years ago though. That Water Seven does not condemn property to put water lines across. How am I supposed to get water to a piece of property if the person next to me would not. Grant an easement, sell an easement or anything? I would be unable to bring a water line down, therefore not be able to get a permit to build a house. That's wrong. I should be able to build the house on that property. Would I have an exception or a way to get an exception?
Well, these, these properties have the easement for the water line.
I, I get that. I don't have any problem voting yes for this, but I'm saying in the grand scheme of things, at some point in time. You're gonna run into something where it's gonna cause an issue. I mean, the fire. Department can say, you've got to run a, a water line down there because you've got a twelve inch main, a quarter of a mile away. But if the person between you and that, that main won't. Allow you to bring the water line down there. I, my understanding is that Water Seven will not condemn it there, or that would put you in like a double jeopardy situation. And I wouldn't, I would not deny someone the right to build a house.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Penley, County Planning Staff, I, um, certainly. We would not, staff would not recommend a situation where we require service, I think, where it was, it was not capable of getting. An, an easement that could be either acquired or is already existing. We would be absolutely would recommend to have the water district and fire district at a meeting where if it, in this case, or would arise. That we have a situation like that, that is not the case in this situation. We do have easements. We, we understand that that would present a potential problem. If there was a lack of being able to acquire an easement. Here that, that would not be the case. So we certainly would understand the concerns if that was a, a situation. But I don't think that's here and now. If it ever did happen in the future, we would absolutely want to have a discussion on that. Before we would recommend a stipulation where it was impossible to get that easement.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I say just a couple of words? This is Jay Leipzig. Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I think, and I know there's been, I've been listening to the discussion. And, uh, I understand the concerns of the zoning board, however, uh, in my opinion, I think this is really an ingenious solution because it. It, uh, notes for future buyers, cause that will be perpetuity on that plat. Uh, the water is required at that, if a home is built on a lot. Um, and at the same time, it doesn't hinder any development. It's, it would be really foolish to put the water line in and then not have a house there. Um, because it would be obsolete, you know, and just, uh, in a very short period of time. So I, I, I think what. What staff has done, and I, I think working with Bob Ford and Legal, uh, is, is a very good solution. Um, in, in response to Commissioner Atwell's question about the, uh, the building code requirement of when that was imposed. I, I don't know the exact dates, but I do know that it was about in the twenty twelve building code. That, that contains that language. And so it's, it, uh, I, I see this kind of win for everybody. It does protect the. Uh, in terms of life and, and health and safety of the occupants. Um, um, we have the fire department. But it doesn't overly burden the property owner and, uh, uh, lets future owners know that water is required if they. Uh, are planning on building on that lot.
David Wolf, uh, the, the problem that I'm looking at is in the future, say, a, uh, family has. A, um. A hundred acres. And they decide that, uh, uh, their son wants to build a house. Um, next to them with a lot of, of ten acres or twelve acres. And they're on a well that easily supplies. Um, the first house. Um, but say it's on the same corner that there's a water line that they've never hooked up to. Now you're forcing a landowner to, uh, run a line. And give up property to the, uh, water district. That wouldn't, I mean, it, it shouldn't be forced on that. I, I don't believe. I think that's where you're kind of talking about too, uh.
Exactly.
So what we, how do we judge that next one? Is what I'm looking at.
I think, and there again, I, I will venture to answer this question about the building official, but, but I do think when that. That applicant comes forward for a building permit, that's reviewed on each particular case. Um, and so there are. Um, that, that would be reviewed if, if water, um, is available or could be, could be available. Um, I, I think there's, I wouldn't call it an exception, but there are, it, it can be reevaluated. There's, there's different ways to, I, I think. We're really looking at, I, I think from the, the overall perspective is just to, uh, ensure that, that future development. That owner is aware that water service, uh, will need to be provided. And so, um. Uh, that's really the, the, the gist of what the, the purpose of this is. Um, I mean, it would, it would, it would be evaluated that, uh, when that building permit application comes forward in the future.
Yeah, Terry Atwell, I, I, I get that we're trying to ensure that even after his friends buy this. If they sell down the road, we want to ensure that, you know, the third person down understands that they're gonna have to hook up on here. I guess the problem that I'm having is, is like this mandate being, uh, kind of thrust up on. Anybody to say, we're not gonna allow you to have a well, we're not gonna allow you to have a cistern. You're going to be forced to put in water. I ha- I, I don't like that force of, force-ness of that.
This is Karen Miller. I, I think. Um, we have a misunderstanding here. We're not requiring. People to, to have a, a water meter and use the water from Water District Seven. It's the, the ability to provide the fire hydrant for, uh, fire protection services.
I'll add to Mr. Chairman Sean Penley, planning staff. We do have, uh, legal staff on this meeting on Zoom. So I would ask if, uh, so Bob Ford had his hand raised. He's available, he, he would provide some comments as well.
Hi, it's, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Good. Uh, Terry, this is not, this is not a new regulation. Uh, this isn't a new requirement. It's not particular to this property. It's the same fire code requirements we've had for a number of years. The situations where water is not readily available, none of that's changed. So, so I can't explain why this has never shown up. In a zoning board, uh. Hearing for the last twenty years. Uh, but my guess is, is because, uh. These just get handled as a matter of course. And I would be happy at your next meeting or before your next meeting. To provide you with our, um. Code requirements for fire flow and how those are met. And as you've noted, there's a lot of places where there is no water, but properties can still be, uh, developed and built. And cause we've built all that into our, our code, it just so happens at this location. There is a water line that's available. And under that situation. When a building permit is issued, our code requirements, uh, for a building permit would require the extension of the line. And that hasn't changed. That's nothing new. It's been there for twenty years. Uh, it's just in this situation. Uh, the applicant assured us that they don't have any interest in building a home now. Uh, they're doing this for other reasons. So why put in a line that nobody's gonna use? And we came up with this agreement that said, yeah, we'll work it that way. And that's, that's how we addressed it. So. All the talk about forcing people to do things. If we're forcing them to do it, we've been forcing them to do it for twenty years and it's worked. Uh, so I, I think there's just so much info, misinformation, uh, about water and fire flow. That, that it might help. In the future to, to give you a paper and we've got, we can work that up pretty quickly, but, um. These are the codes, we're enforcing the codes, we're not changing the codes and they've worked well in Johnson County for twenty some years. So I'm gonna go back on mute and put my hand down. Thank you.
Yeah, Terry, it's just.
David Wolf.
We're just here, we've been here fourteen years and it, it, it's just never come up. So it's just some.
Excuse me, um. I would like the codes and that information given to us. I have a house that was built across from. Uh, a fa- our family's property. They asked us to. Um, give away easement so they could, uh, run a line to that house. Uh, because there's a small water line that runs along our property line. The house is there. And we didn't give up any property. So. They got the building permit, they built the house. And so. Where are we? And, and I've been on here for twenty-three, twenty, at least twenty years. So I'm just, it, we have to make it so we can make decisions every time with all the information. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Wolf, what, what is your opinion? I mean, this one doesn't feel right. And I don't know if, if the other board members are feeling. He- here's what I do know. This issue came up, whether or not homeowners had the right to use. Wells, systems, whatnot. And we were adamant as a planning commission that yes, landowner should have the right. This to me feels like a backdoor way to force the landowners into rural water. And it just doesn't feel right to me.
Right. Uh, it doesn't feel right to me. And when I called the water district at that time, uh, because on the request of the, the neighbor. Or the new neighbor that was wanting the, uh, easement. Um, I was told, I don't remember exactly who was in the office that told me, but, uh, I was told that the water district isn't in the. Business to buy easement for water lines. So that, and that's where I'm at.
This is Brian Walker. Um, I don't want to hold the landowner up on replotting this land. I mean, we could take out the recommendation from the stipulations. And give him the option if he wants to inform future owners, if they should talk to the fire department. But I think we're getting ahead of ourselves and I don't want to slow him down.
Yeah, Terry, well, I don't want to slow him down either. A- a- and I, I, I think if we're gonna pass this, we're going to have to. Put that stipulation in there because they may not always be here. This may get left to somebody else. And if someone goes to build, they're gonna be shocked at the expense of what they're gonna have to put in. I think there needs to be a requirement. But I'm just really kind of taken back at how this is, uh, kind of been handled.
David Wolf, my main thing is I don't want to set a precedence.
There you go.
For the next one.
There you go.
That if we don't have all the information and there's some, some obvious things that aren't correct. So that's all my, and I don't want to hold you up as a landlord and what you want to do either. I, I agree totally with, with, uh. Mr. Walker.
I know our group. They're good no matter what. They'll, they'll, they'll put it in, they build a house, the fire code has to require it. They're also good that ninety-nine percent chance they're gonna put water in anyway, because they don't want well water, well water out there is pretty bad. That's why we put it in. Um. So if you pass it with this, with the amendment, I'm happy to put it in there, because I think it's fair to the next guy. I mean, if I was buying it and I didn't know it, I'd be a little mad. But. And that could be five years down the road, ten years down the road. And if you come back and say, you don't have to have it, we're gonna have to do it anyway, because fire codes are gonna make me do it eventually. Or make them to go do it.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Leipzig. Can I just make another comment? I, just to, to that point, um, the applicant just stated. Yeah, if you wish to remove that, the recommendation, uh, all we were trying to do is to make it so that this became part of the permanent record on that property. Uh, in perpetuity. So that if, if there's development in a lot, the, uh, uh, the water line would be built, provide access to water. However, um, I think, you know, cause what'll happen then is, is twenty years down the line. Um, uh, if, if someone comes in, they'll, they'll apply for a building permit, they will, will. Will be determined that they have to provide water and it will have to be put in. So I, I guess all we're trying to do is to be. Uh, transparent and upfront with that property owner when they come in, so that's, that will be in perpetuity on that plat. And that was the reason for that note. And, um, I was gonna ask the attorney and, um, Bob Ford if he has any additional comments. But that really is the reasoning, just so it's, we have something in record that would go on that plat permanently in perpetuity.
Yeah, I do have one last comment. I think I, I would, I would. Yeah, I do have one last comment. I think I, I would, I would ask that you give us the opportunity to come back, uh, in a month or two. Uh, when you have, uh, the time and we will go through the fire code requirements with you if you'd like. Or we could do it in writing just through an email and explain it, but this system, and I said this before, this system and this approach and these regulations have been in place for a long, long time. And they work. And nobody, I won't say nobody, but very rarely has there ever been a, uh, a house that hasn't been built under our fire code because we have so many different ways to comply with the fire code. It's just here, there's water and this is, whether you take this out or leave it in, the requirement remains the same. So if you took this paper out, the requirement doesn't go away. This, this paper doesn't impose the requirement. The paper simply gives notice of the requirement. And so what you're trying to, to address is, is some of you think that this is somehow something new that's just sprung up with this application. And that's not accurate at all. So I, I just ask that, that I, I understand your concern. I understand the confusion. And we can come back and, and lay it out all for you so you can see where, uh, where we've been and how it works. And I think you'll be completely satisfied, uh, when you see how it all fits together.
Do. Randy Hutchins, I do have a question. So, who supersedes who? So are we saying the Fire Department can dictate to the, to the, this board and the Planning Development Group and the County Commissioners what we do and what we don't do?
This, this is a Board of County Commissioners regulation. This is a, this is a county regulation. So, so yes, the Board of County Commissioners dictates what codes we adopted, adopt, we've adopted this fire code. This is the Board of County Commissioners' fire code. There is no fire district running the show here and the water district isn't running the show here. This is the Board of County Commissioners' code.
I got a question.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So, pass it the way it is, right? And you get the code in there and it gets plotted. Where it goes on the plot, right? The notice. All right. The plot, thank you. All right. So, option A. Option B is, we don't put them on notice. Can we still approve? Because it would meet all requirements.
The, the, the thing that I see, David Wolf, the thing that I see is that, um, say you, somebody doesn't. And, um, we're mistakenly, or something is, is not up to that and doesn't enforce that they now pay that Lot Five back, things like that. But that, we can, we can, on the request of, of you as the land property owner, we can do, we can pass anything as long as you are
We're good with.
fully aware of it.
Brian Walker, he's, he's not asking to build on these lots. He's asking to replot the plat. Uh, and I'm willing to make a motion. As such.
Make a motion.
Uh, Brian Walker, I move to approve the replotting of this plat, uh, in accordance with staff's recommendations. And am open to removing the stipulation that is a notice and leaving that to the landowner to provide to future owners of said lots.
Rebecca Bard, nine second.
But I think you got to make a motion that states it one way or the other. You know what? Sean Penn, the planning staff. So just for clarification, Mr. Walker, are you suggesting that the motion would include approval, recommending approval of the plat with the stipulations noted with the exception of the requirement for the notice on a water line, which is stipulation number two? Is that correct?
No, there's two stipulations involved. Um, stipulation, he'll give me a second. Stipulation one A is the note on the plat and stipulation two is filing the agreement. So I'm understanding Commissioner Walker that you would like to remove stipulations one A and stipulation two.
Brian Walker, that's correct.
I'd also, uh, Sean Penn, the planning staff, just for clarification, so the board understands this recommendation will go forward to the Board of County Commissioners for the final decision. Staff could continue to recommend a requirement as stipulated. If the board were to choose to concur with that, this could require remanding it back to the zoning board. Just, I think that's what I understand would be required if there's a change to the stipulations that was recommended by the zoning board. Uh, so we'd like for the applicant also just to be aware of that. I understand the proposal. Certainly, uh, the zoning board is, uh, entitled to make that recommendation. But I believe if there is a change, it would have to be remanded back. There may not be a change. Just, just want to make clarification on it. Okay, do we, uh, have a second?
Rebecca Bard, nine second.
Okay, with the clarification. All right, um, all in favor? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion passes.
Randy Hutchins, before we move on, I, I'd like to see an action taken by staff. There's, there's questions I've got that I want to get comfortable with. Number one, what is roles and responsibilities of the Fire Department when it comes to these codes and how does it pertain to our codes that we enforce? So if we don't believe that code is fair to the landowners, all right, how do we present that, um, to make a change? And the second thing I've got is, what is roles and responsibilities and the financial responsibilities of the, of the rural water districts? My understanding is when you pay for the cost of that meter, you're paying for the extension of that water to your home. That's why it's $10,000. So, I want to understand who's responsible for, for funding, um, this as well.
John DeGrand, my understanding is that you are responsible to pay for the installation of the extension line and then buy the meter after that. That is a ton of money to put a water line down for a fire hydrant if you're not actually going to look on to it.
Yeah, and I think that, that's what we need to understand as a board. And then for mayor, once we understand all the facts and the, you know, legal, legal, um, you know, responsibilities of, of all involved, then we as a board can make a recommendation that either to the planning commissioner or the county commissioners on the future action to take.
Yeah, Terry, well, so I have a comment to that because I am a recipient of having to put in a water line on top of buying our meter in, on our street. So it was done prior to us building. And just like what lots three, four, or five would have to pay somebody back, it is at a lower percent. Um, but it did cost us like $11,000. However, our water line is itty bitty. We don't have enough water flow for our street. Your water pressure goes down and we certainly don't have a fire hydrant. So those are things I would, uh, would have liked to have had. But, so that's why I'm taken back by the, how extreme this is, that it's going to have to be this big water line when obviously that didn't, it, it's not like across the board. I'm just kind of confused. So.
Karen Miller, so, so, um, Commissioner Atwell, uh, since you don't have a possibility of having fire flow because you have a smaller line, it, it's most likely that this particular fire code would not apply to your situation, that, that these other exceptions would apply.
I, I, I totally get that. Um, a- and I'm not, and I'm not trying to imply that the planning staff has control over what the Fire Department is doing. I understand that the planning staff is not requiring this. It's the Fire Department that is requiring this. So we just need to.
And just one, one comment, Karen Miller, that this, um, is the fire code. And, and not, it is not the, the individual fire departments that are making this decree. This is, this is a code that, um, is, is handled by our, our building code department and brought to the Board of County Commissioners, just like planning department handles the zoning regulations and takes to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, this is Jay Leipzig. We will provide additional documentation for you. Be happy to do that. Um, uh, and we can, I think we could provide it probably both ways. Make a presentation at your next meeting as well as provide a document to you in, in written form that you'll have before the meeting as well. So we would be happy to do that.
All right. Thank you, Jay. All right.
And if I can make the announcement, this, um, this will be heard, um, at the Board of County Commissioners Thursday, April 20th at 9:30 a.m. in the board hearing room, which is this room in the county administration building, 111 South Cherry Street, Olathe, Kansas.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I say one more thing, Terry? So, he- here, here's the deal. Like, you're not being told you cannot put that on there now. We're just saying we're not going to require it. If you choose to still put that on your plat, that's your choice. But.
You guys are saying probably
No, we're just saying that we don't want to force you to do that.
Okay.
But you have the option. If that's what you choose to do, you can put anything on your plat you want to.
So if I go to the guys, right, and say, hey, before we go to that April meeting, are you guys still good with this? We can add it still? Because I, I feel like what's going to happen, they'll get rejected. I'll be back here next month.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest, we, staff, as Jay mentioned, staff will be happy to prepare an update where we bring back to this board. In addition, we will have to also provide an update to the Board of County Commissioners. As Bob Ford indicated, this is a fire code requirement. This is going to be a requirement of any future building permit on these properties. They will be subject to that requirement. We are not suggesting that it should be a requirement to install the lines now with the plat. We're just suggesting as a notice. That requirement will apply for a building permit. The applicant and owners are certainly entitled to install a water line at any time that they choose. That will not prevent them or preclude them from doing that. But we'll be happy to provide an update to help clarify this. I think it will help at the next meeting if we provide that. And then also with the Board of County Commissioners so that they understand the difference between the zoning requirement and the building and fire code requirement. Okay.
But for one, for Randy Hutchins, for one clarification, so this, it's the Fire Department is not requiring this as a code. So who, who does this Fire Code Department report to then?
This is a building code requirement. Fire codes is part of the building codes.
It's, excuse me, David Wolf. The county, uh, depends on the county fire marshal office. Those were, those are where the fire codes come from, for the county. Just so you, and, and so if it's a code, it has gone through that office and been presented in front of the county commissioners to make it a code.
We met with him and he said, you're fine to plot it, do whatever you want. But the minute you apply for a building permit, the fire code is going to require, because, because the water study was done, so much volume was there, that it was supported. If it didn't support it, the code didn't apply, is what he told me. When we met with him, he said, if, since we did the study, came back, yes, there's enough volume in, on Edgerton that we apply for a building code, then they're going to say, basically I paid for the study that they would have to pay for, right in advance.
David Wolf, and during this whole discussion, I think we've used, uh, Fire District, uh, and we've used Water District. Um, not until, uh, uh, Mr. Ford's last comment, was it used as a, uh, county fire code? That, that doesn't have to do with the Water District, doesn't have to do with the, the, uh, Fire Department District, anything. Um, and from my knowledge, um, Terry, at yours, a two inch wouldn't, uh, handle the fire flow.
No, I understand that.
And an eight inch.
Eight inch.
Probably would. So, and I don't know the codes, but I think we need to still have that clarification and have that information so we can make good decisions.
Yeah, Terry, well, like, I'm not trying to be difficult here. Like, I, I, we need to understand. And I feel like, um, the understanding got left out. There should have been a little bit more explanation as to where it came from, how it came about, um, before we got to this point. And we wouldn't be here sitting, keeping everybody here for an hour when this should have taken five minutes.
That's probably why I looked the letter because we went through trouble, me and with the fire guy, you guys, everybody, and Bob. And that's where it came out is if they ever build, they're going to have to have a fire hydrant. And they don't have to right now. They can put a shed up with no water. That's fine. You build a stick house, you're done.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'm O for two on this too, by the way.
All right, uh, next item, uh, application SW 23 dash 277 dash PDP slash FDP GA, 159th Street and Claire Road. Um, 16105 John Glenn Parkway. Does staff have a, have a presentation?
Thank you. Um, yeah. Uh, Diane Wickland, um, Planning Department, uh, would like to enter in the staff report that's dated March 15, 2023 into the record. Um, so the, uh, the applicant is Van Trust LLC and the landowner is Johnson County. Um, and the existing zoning on the property is the PCLP Logistics Park District. And the existing improvements, um, on this property right now are two warehouse buildings that are under, uh, currently under construction, uh, for the New Century Commerce Center. Uh, the applicant is requesting a preliminary and final sign development plan uh, for multiple monument signs, uh, at separate locations for the New Century Commerce Center uh, complex, uh, the east area side, which is about 536 acre, uh, in, industrial development, uh, generally, uh, located at the southwest corner of 159th Street and Claire Road. Um, so you can see here on the screen, this is an aerial view of the surrounding area. Um, and the red line indicates the, uh, location of the, uh, entire New Century Commerce Center development. And then the New Century Air Center is there to the west. Uh, this is a map, uh, that's indicating the locations of the proposed, uh, monument signs. So you can see here, so the, the primary monument sign, uh, will be at 159th Street and Claire Road. Um, and it will be about 12 feet by 40, 42 feet overall, um, in the height that's 12 feet. And then, uh, the two secondary monument signs would be at 159th Street and John Glenn Parkway. And then, um, down at 165th Street and Claire Road. Uh, those secondary monument signs, um, are 10 feet by 30 feet overall and, uh, 10 feet in height. And then the tenant signs um, will be, uh, uh, for the entrance for each individual new buildings as they come online. And those are 10 feet by four feet overall. And the height is also 10 feet, um, on those signs. So here's just a graphic showing the primary monument sign. And then this is the secondary monument sign, pretty similar, just if, uh, difference in height. Um, and just a quick note, the, um, primary monument sign will have a very small, um, uh, up lighting, uh, lighting product that'll just shine onto, uh, onto the sign. And then this is what the tenant signs for each building will look like, or kind of the entrance to the buildings. And then, um, there's room for future tenant signs as you, as you can see there. Uh, and then also this slide just shows you kind of a typical, um, so the landscaping that they propose. Is a mixture of tree shrubs, flowers, um, a little different, um, for each of the different signs. But this just kind of gives you a, a general sense of, um, the, the landscaping that they propose. And so, uh, just also to note, um, that the proposed signs are all, uh, located outside existing street right of way. And also, uh, the applicant did submit, um, site distance information. Um, in that, uh, which verified that all proposed, uh, landscaping and signs are located outside of the site distance triangle. And I do not create any traffic hazards or safety concerns. Um, and the public works department did review and accept that, uh, site distance information. Um, and then just also to know in your, uh, at the end of the packet, uh, that you received is just a narrative explaining the, the signage. Um, and then also there was a, uh, memo from the city of Olathe in the, uh, and that's attached. But, uh, generally, um, Olathe just had some concerns about mainly this, the sign at a hundred and sixty-fifth Street and Claire Road. They were concerned about it being in the future, future right of way. Again, it's not in the existing right of way. Um, and so. Uh, so, um, so the applicant has, um, revised the location and kind of the orientation of that sign. Uh, to mitigate, uh, the, the city's concerns. And so, so now it's, uh, only about twelve feet, uh, into that future right of way. And so I think, um, staff is, um, is, is fine with this new, new location. And you have a handout of that if you want to kind of look at the details of that. That's what Sherry handed out. Um, and so we'll, um, when we get to the stipulations, we'll be recommending, um, adding a stipulation so that the, um, that this new proposed location will be, uh, put shown in the, in the drawings. And so, so that's generally, um, so it's pretty straightforward application. It's, it's just really the monument signs, uh, for, for the property, um, and, uh, planning staff is recommending approval of the, uh, sign development plan for those multiple signs. Subject to the stipulations that are listed on page nine and ten. And so just a couple of amendments, uh, that staff, uh, would suggest for the stipulations. Uh, so that number, uh, six stipulation on page ten, uh, just talks about sign permits. And, um, just having talked with the applicant right before the meeting. Um, I think we would suggest, um, changing that language, uh, to something, uh, similar to, um, sign permit shall be required for all signs that are not identified on the final development plan. For the New Century Commerce Center and, and all signs shall be in accordance with article twenty of the Johnson County, um, zoning subdivision regulations. Um, and, and so really the idea here is that, um, this, uh, all the signs that are shown on this development plan right now. They don't need a particular sign permit, that this is the approval for those signs. Any future signs, uh, like especially specifically for the tenant signs, because those would be the, the newer ones that come in. Would need a sign permit. And the idea is that they're going to, you know, kind of meet this, the design, um, elements that are set forth in these plans. So, um, so that would be one suggested amendment for stipulation number six. And then, um, staff would like to add, uh, or propose, uh, adding a stipulation, uh, stipulation number seven. That's the second handout that Sherry gave to you. Um, and, uh, and that's again related to this drawing up on the screen. Um, and that stipulation would be number seven, and it would say the applicant shall revise the drawings. To show the new proposed location for the sign at a hundred and sixty-fifth Street and Claire Road. As shown on the exhibit marked a hundred and sixty-fifth Street and Claire Row, which is the handout that you have. Uh, the revised drawing shall be submitted to the planning department prior to the Board of County Commissioners meeting, uh, for, for this, uh, for approval of this application. And I think, and then just also to note that there's a suggested motion on page ten, uh, for the board's reference. And I, I think at this point I'll stop if there's questions and then the applicant is also present.
Alright, thank you, um. Does the applicant have a presentation or agree with staff or, and if you, uh, please state your name and organization you're with?
Sure, uh, Ryan Covert with Olson, uh, representing Van Trust on this application. All right, address seventy-three zero one West one hundred and thirty-third Street in Overland Park. Um, yes, we, um, you know, Diane handled that presentation well, um, you've, you've seen the plans. The idea is that we have these signs of similar character and harmony. Uh, you know, we have the primary sign at one hundred and ninety, I think Claire, secondary signs at the major entrances into the park, into the industrial park. And then, um, the, the tenant signs for each building, building driveway. And, um, that with her amendment to stipulation number six, um, that she mentioned, um, that would allow, you know, as more buildings come online, tenant signs or a new entrance that would have an identical secondary monument sign. Go forward with construction without running back through, through this whole process. I, um, definitely second her on, um, that recommendation to stipulation number six. Stipulation number five, I guess, just as a clar- clarification, uh, a building permit shall be required for each sign. That was driven by the size triggering building, building code, okay?
Okay, thank you. Board have any discussion on this issue? Good with it? If that's the case, then, uh, entertain a motion, it's, Terry?
Yeah, uh, Terry, well, I can make the motion and make sure I have this right, Diane. Uh, Terry, well, I move to recommend approval of application number SW twenty-three dash two seven seven dash PDP slash FDP. For a preliminary and final sign development plan for multiple monument signs for the New Century Commerce Center complex. Subject to the recommended stipulations and for the reasons outlined in staff report. With changes to stipulation six as presented by staff and adding in stipulation seven.
We have a second?
Randy Hutchins has a second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries.
And, um, Chairman, so I can go ahead and mention, um, uh, so that this application, uh, will also go to the Board of County Commissioners on April twentieth, uh, nine thirty AM. Uh, Johnson County Administration Building, one eleven South Cherry, Olathe, and, uh, in, in this room here. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda, other business. Uh, the revised zoning, uh, zoning board bylaws, and I understand Pig Trent is not available, so Sean and or Jay is gonna do that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, Jay, would you like to start now? I'll go through the.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Sean, uh, Jay Leipzig, planning department. Yeah, we wanted to, um, get these bylaws in front of the zoning board again. This is, uh, I believe you've, you've seen these a couple of times now, uh, with the latest versions and the, the latest version of them. Uh, keep in mind, these bylaws is, it's kind of a template document that we're using for all of the zoning boards. And so you have the bylaws and in your packet is the Board of County Commissioners, um, committee's application form. As well as the acknowledgement of receipt with the code of ethics. And the actual code of ethics, the new version that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on February sixteenth, um, of twenty twenty-three. So just to point that out in your, in your document. And then, uh, Sean is gonna go through briefly on, and note the changes in the bylaws, uh, or I guess I, I could, I could do that too, Sean, if you'd like. Um, as I go along here, just we, we noted the, uh, the language you'll see is struck out in blue. Uh, these are, most of these changes are, are very, very, um, uh, minor, it's just consistent. So we're using the same language of all of the, um, zoning boards, and so they're con- consistent for all, all three of them. Going past, uh, even two point oh one. Including spelling out Board of County Commissioners. Uh, um, and then having a disclaimer about two point oh three, about any additional duties for the Board of County Commissioners as well. There again, three point oh one, uh, and references Roberts Rules of Order, the, the current edition that is used to, uh, for the, um, order of business for the meetings. Um, the four point oh one, uh, composition qualifications of the members. Uh, there again, very minor spelling out Board of County Commissioners rather than just board. Uh, terms of office, some minor clarification there in terms of language. Four point oh five references the code of ethics that was recently adopted by the board. Uh, four point oh six, the conflict of interest provisions are the same. Um, and, uh, and added the, the additional section to that. Uh, four point oh seven, uh, and resignations, housekeeping items for that. Rather go through, these are all very, very minor changes, uh, in terms of wording. Uh, I'm looking at four point oh nine, there again, has cleaned up some of the redundant wording as well. Um, and five point oh one, the officers and staff, you could see that rather than, than use the word chairperson, we changed that to chair. And this was a suggestion by, um, the other zoning boards as well, just to keep them consistent. Looking back at the, um, under item six point oh one, the meetings, um, uh, the parliamentary authority, uh, is all in, included in that. And then you'll see what, what dictates the, the open, open meeting requirements, the quorum requirements, um, ex parte communication, there's no changes on that. Uh, we did take out the, uh, the public comment clause and, and cleaned up some of that language, the order of business. It's the same, uh, we talked about that last week, taking out the public comment portion. Um, cause the comments that we made, we, will be made about the, uh, the various applications. And then item six point oh eight, public hearings, um, and consistent with, with that language. And the order for opening a public hearing and closing the public hearing. And then, um, guidelines and offering public testimony as well.
Yeah, Jay?
Yes.
Six point, uh, oh eight oh one E, it says Northwest Zoning Board.
Oh, yes, thank you, I was gonna, page five?
Page seven.
Or page seven, yes, that is correct, thank you. Jason, there's also one, yes, it should say.
That's the one I caught.
SWZV, if you go back to page five. Under six point oh three, open meetings. There is a, uh, an equal sign in the middle of that page that should be taken out as well.
Oh, yep.
Um, just a minor correction there. Yeah, thank you, Jason, pointing that out. Uh, there is a, a clause in the, the new bylaws, six point one fourth for telecommunication voting. Uh, in other words, voting, uh, by Zoom or by, by phones, we will kind of more, uh, modern approach to the, the zoning boards that we have had in the past. And then, uh, there's a brief section on, on conflicts and, and public records. And with that, uh, Sean, did I miss anything or anything you want to add as well? Go for it, jump in.
Yeah, no, Jay, I think you covered it, those typos are, those are a couple of the things I was gonna note. Also on page one, there's also a typo for the section two point oh two for the TSWZV. That, that, these are the kind of, uh, typos that we will be corrected before this does go to the Board of County Commissioners. The other thing, as Jay pointed out, all the substantive changes were, have been included by the legal, uh, staff since the last time you saw these bylaws. So those, those big items that we wanted to talk about with the changes to the, uh, section four point oh six, conflicts of interest. That does reflect the, and the code of ethics, that reflects a change, uh, from a recently adopted Board of County Commissioners code of ethics. So we're, we're using the same, uh, updated code of ethics that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners just last month. So that, that's a recent change that the legal staff added in. And then the public participation section that Jay mentioned, that's, that was amended, s- section six point one oh. Because public comments are handled a little bit differently at the zoning board compared to the planning commission. So that's one difference there. But otherwise, all the, the information is the same as Jay mentioned with all the other zoning boards. So these bylaws will be consistent, uh, with the other zoning, uh, boards, with the exception being some of the compositions is obviously different because of the, the township. Uh, composition, but otherwise, these are generally the same as the other zoning boards. And so what we intend to do, the zoning board will make a recommendation if you agree with these changes. Uh, you make a motion to approve the bylaws and then they will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners and they'll be considered together. And they'll all be adopted together by the Board of County Commissioners.
And just, uh, one other note, Jay Leipzig, again, we, we have approved, uh, the Northwest zoning, consolidated zoning board. Bylaws will have the, uh, Southeast bylaws, uh, their final version in front of them, the first meeting in April. We'd like to bring this back to the Board of County Commissioners, uh, probably in the middle of April, or that, that third, third meeting in April.
This is Brian Walker. Did I hear you write that the code of ethics is an attachment to this?
It is not an attachment, it was actually part of, included in your packet.
Okay, yes, correct, I understood that. And you, you, I think you also mentioned that you made changes to it since last year.
Uh, no, it's, it's just referenced in, there's, there's a new version that the Board of County Commissioners adopted on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And there's a reference to that document in the bylaws, um.
Understand, and do you have the track changes on that?
For the, uh, the, the, the code of ethics.
That was very helpful how you went through the track changes on this document.
Yes. Megan, do we have that anywhere? I'm, I don't know if we have that, to be honest with you, and I, I don't think we do.
So is the question showing the track changes from the Board of County Commissioners' old code of ethics to their new code of ethics?
Correct.
That's not something we would have, we would have to ask Linda Sater, the board clerk. So we could look into that.
Yeah, I think that's correct, this is Sean, we didn't, we do not have those previous code of ethics. I don't know right off the top of my head what those changes were, to be honest with you, for the code of ethics. It was after a lengthy discussion with the Board of County Commissioners and some of those items. But those, some of those items are reflected in the bylaws. So if you see some of this language in here, uh, it's strict, it's specifically added in those sections we talked about. That's really what the content of it is, I believe, as, as it relates to the zoning.
This is Jay Leipzig, and, uh, Bob Ford, if you're available, if you are, if you are able to comment on the, the new, um, code of ethics. You know, if, if you have any comments on that?
I don't hear, hear Bob.
I'm, I'm sorry, go on.
It's muted.
This is Sean, and I don't know if, uh, Bob is available, but. This is Sean, and I don't know if Bob is available, but certainly we could also provide that update as well. For the Code of Ethics and the changes that were made. We just don't have that at this time.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Bylaws? Okay. Would somebody want to? If somebody wanted to make a motion to accept it with the, I would, I would make a comment, you know, to the, the couple of typos that we pointed out. That gets mentioned in the motion so that they get corrected.
Yes, Sean Pennley, planning staff, staff will make those corrections that we discussed here for these typos. And again, referencing those Code of Ethics that were adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. Those, that, that is a, a separate document. You have a separate, an, an application form as well, and an acknowledgement of receipt of the Code of Ethics. That is separate from the bylaws, but we'll be happy to provide updates on that as well. And once these changes are made, if the board, zoning board recommends approval, they will be forwarded on to the Board of County Commissioners.
Someone will make a motion?
Yeah, so we're doing the Code of Ethics and the bylaws? Or just the bylaws?
Just the bylaws.
Just the bylaws.
Okay, Terry Atwell, I move to approve the bylaws for Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board with noting the few changes that need to be made.
Second?
Donna Getzmann, second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anything additional to, for business? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Terry Atwell, move to adjourn.
One second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
And there was.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Acknowledge.
Hi, Jay.
Code of Ethics.